I call to order this meeting of regular board meeting of the Southwest Leaking Local School District on January 13th in the District Board of Education Meeting Room. It is 7:21. I would like to recognize all of our visitors here and online. If you will, please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
This is Potaskoala Elementary Third Grade Connection Club.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Sure.
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Next item is public participation. Do we, we don't have any. Item 1F is the adoption of the agenda. Need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. That motion passes. Item number two, request to speak on agenda items Teamsters Local 413 and Southwest Leaking Education Association. And I see no one. So item number three, approval of minutes from the December 16th regular board meeting. Motion to approve, go minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. Passes. Item number four, financial report from the treasurer.
Who's the motion first?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr., any discussion?
No. Fairly routine month, nothing really out of the ordinary. You know, we came in basically slightly lower than we expected revenue, but a lot of that because of the new foundation formula and how it's coming in. We did get our first payment for the new formula. There's still some errors that are working out over the next two payments, but there's still a big payment, about 1.8 million dollars. But in the five year forecast, there's two line-ons, restricted and unrestricted. The total number we got based with the new enrollment was really about the same as we projected, except our restricted's higher, so it's north of a million dollars now. So what it basically did is took unrestricted funds, moved down to restricted, then restricted how we can spend the money. So suppose they gave us more money, but they restricted how we can spend it. There's like four different restrictions, EL, gifted, success and wellness, and one more that we, DPIA, that we have to track now and report if we spent the money every year to the state. So gave us more money, eh, not really, but restricted how we can spend it. So as that gets further, we may see additional money next couple because there's still some transportation issues and stuff, numbers had to work out. So we'll see when it gets to the final, hopefully by the first March payment, we'll see what the final number is.
So we had somebody come from legislature, come and talk to us and say that this funding formula was going to be, it's going to fix, basically fix everything. Do you see that happening?
Well, it shows that one thing that did it, if it actually gets fully funded, that we'll see north about 2 million dollars more.
Okay.
This first year, from the very first estimate, we were flat-lined. We knew we were flat-lined. But if it gets fully funded, we'll see about 2 million dollars more. I guess, you know, and kind of mean today, basically about the five year forecast and that, and they're hearing that the Senate doesn't want to do it any further than this next biennium. So wants to get rid of this formula already.
So we got a two-year thing.
Oh, two-year, and who knows what we'll have after that, so.
Wow.
We'll make it constitutional for two years and then we'll just go back.
Everybody will forget about it again.
Right.
Well, you know, Cop, I think Representative Cop is leaving. He was the one, the big.
It was his formula plan.
It was his form of the plan. So it'll be interesting to see how next biennium budget went. I mean, the House wanted along last time. The Senate was out back and forth and kind of the compromise they agreed to put in. So we're glad to see what next biennium budget shows. But for this year, basically, we didn't get any more money and what we did get is restricted more.
Right.
So. But for expenditures, we're right on where we projected at. Year-to-date, we're about $300,000 better than we anticipated, so.
Rick, I'm curious on fuel and natural gas. Do we put that out for bid or do we get a subsidy or?
Fuel, they basically try to get, we try to see best prices. We're part of a natural gas purchase program.
Are we?
Through a high school council. Same thing with our electric, we're through a power for schools purchasing cooperative, trying to bear prices. So yeah, we do, and we do still get a little bit of a subsidy back. There's a excise tax on it and basically it's grown over the years, but we file for getting part of that back, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty much, but that's all we get. You know, if fuel prices go up, we see our prices go up.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
It goes up and down every year like everybody else's personal fuel bill.
Is that diesel or is that gas?
Both. Majority diesel because the buses are all diesel.
All diesel.
But it's also gas vans and our mainest vehicles, mowers and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So our, with those, we've listed funds. Will we be able to spend? I mean, does that make sense? Are we going to be able to spend those funds?
Yes, we're just going to have to be strategic and.
Okay.
Know where we're putting what in and where it's coming from.
Okay.
Yeah, so success, the two really, because we've always had gifted. We're spending more and then EL, obviously we're spending way more because it wasn't a lot of money. Really, DPIA, we've had that in the past. It used to be called DPIA, then it went to economic disadvantage, now it's back to DPIA. Now it's restricted. Uses are very similar to the success and wellness fund. So success, we're getting about a half million dollars in the success and wellness funds just kind of unrestricted, but they said they'd give us more money. So basically, we do have to have a plan. We know we have some money, we got in the past under, when Kasich was in, not Kasich, but Dewine was in office, he put that first two years. So we have a half million dollars set aside in Fund 467, which is what everybody did that first, you know, first biennium. This new biennium, they mixed in, all went to the school fund. So we still have to spend it per the plan. You got to have a plan in place, you have to have a community person, company to work with.
Yep.
You know, Dr. Perkins and her teams working on, you know, has a plan in place. Right now, we're using some of the money to pay for, what's his title again?
Jeff Hammond.
Yeah, what's his title?
Family liaison.
Family liaison, so now his salary is getting paid out of that as a liaison with the community and stuff, the family members. So we are starting to spend it. We still have, you know, a bit of money left over from that first biennium, plus we're getting a half million dollars more this year. But it does tie our hands a little bit more.
With the new restrictions though, is that going to change any of the way we spend really? I mean.
Not that I, not that I believe, I just think there's going to be less things that.
Just a different way to code it.
Different way of coding it.
Okay.
So basically, because there's still a lot of the same way, mental health, different reasons, how you can spend the money. You know, we, we can still spend the same way, we just have to be able to track how we spend it and then say, yes, we spent the money. If we get audited, we got to show how we spent the money. So obviously, Dr. Perkins and I, we're going to follow the rules.
No, no, absolutely.
Make sure it's properly accounted for, we know where we spent it and so forth. Have any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. Items five, personnel consent calendar. I assume we can take these either all together or separate?
We would, I'd like to take out D so we can have a little bit of a discussion. But.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move 5A through C and 5E through G.
Second. Mr. Jones?
I got a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm slow on the uptake on that one. With the bus driver resignations, how are we looking at the bus garage?
So we, we were anticipating.
Okay.
We haven't had any surprises and hopefully we don't have any surprises. We only have currently two subs. And we do have some in the queue being trained, but as we talked about before, it takes a long time. So we're, we're doing okay. I mean, I would say it's, it's great as I'm sure you've experienced with your own children. We've had, you know, doubled routes pretty much daily. But we do have a full fleet of drivers. It's just a matter of if they're sick and at work, et cetera. So we're going to need more drivers next year, but I think everyone's kind of feeling that same thing. So right now, we are fully staffed, even with the loss of these.
How deep is our sub pool?
Two.
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 Count them on.
Shallow.
Shallow.
Very shallow. We have others that are being trained and Ryan has, he's working very hard. He's made a couple of connections with some potential that maybe already have the CDL, so we might have some more in the works, but right now, two.
Just, just from my kids' experiences with sports, I'm, I'm so grateful when I see these buses sitting at tournaments for hours on end and I think, you know, they just finished a week of probably doing double routes and now they're sitting at a wrestling tournament or, you know, a basketball. It's just amazing.
Yeah, our bus drivers are really stepping up this year to do a great job helping us out.
Any other questions? Did we have a second on that?
Yes, we did.
Anybody, any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. That passes. We need a motion for 5D.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Just wanted to know what.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that anyway. So the social and emotional learning provider, basically they're going to be an additional support for our KQ3s, almost serving in the capacity of a guidance counselor, but part-time. So we, we put some feelers out there through various, you know, different entities, the, the network of all the guidance counselors around the state, as well as looking for, you know, those that are in a position that are subbing with their guidance or, you know, social work or something that could help us out now that we have a third elementary open. But unfortunately, at this point where we're at in the year and trying to find somebody who's interested in part-time, it's just not feasible. So we're going to add this position on, which we'll be able to fill internally and have them, basically they'll be working two additional days, serving in that capacity, helping with the social, emotional needs of our kids. It's only be, it's only a moment in time. This is just for the second semester and in the spring, we're going to look to fill that with a full-time person and/or position, depending on what we can find. So this is coming from the wellness funds, which directly supports social and emotional. So similar to a guidance counselor or a social worker, it's just the availability and creativity of what we had. I don't know if you want to add to that, Dan, or if you feel like I.
I think it's a little bit more flexible than what the social and housing house position would do. You know, I'm just thinking of the back. But what we want the person to do, pre-buildings a little bit as well, so. But yeah, it's kind of a whole way to work for the rest of the year. But I am extremely confident in the personal work looking to help with.
And, and we can add that on as well. So, well, two things, obviously, as we've talked about before and you've heard, the, the needs of our kids are at all-time high. So we're just a little concerned with two guidance counselors and we do have one going on maternity leave, so that is being filled with a long-term sub who does have their guidance license. They have been, our previous guidance counselor retired from that. But that's just stretching our services a little thin at the elementary level. So Adrian Carter has her guidance license, a guidance background, has worked there before and she's currently only a part-time employee in the district. So she's willing to help us out and do two additional days a week in this capacity, which we would greatly appreciate because we desperately need some help with the elementary. So that's the person that Dan and I are referring to and she does have a background and, and the degrees and is willing to serve for the semester in that capacity and then she would go back to her traditional position next year.
Okay.
So that's what it is.
So I have two concerns. One, the title name, I'm not real thrilled with social, emotional learner, learning provider.
Okay.
If indeed it is guidance and she holds the certificate, can't we just call it that?
Well, she's going to be doing, I mean, Dan can talk about that, but she's going to be doing part guidance, part social work. It's what's more than just what the guidance counselor is able to do. We feel like she's qualified because she has experience in that realm and we, their social workers are few and far between at the moment.
And then I guess the other question then, she would be paid as an administrator, right?
She'd be paid her per diem, yeah. Up to 40 days for the rest of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can't pay her as a teacher because she's an admin.
Okay.
So it won't be 40 days. She's agreed to two a week, which is Mondays and Tuesdays. And by the time you take some Mondays out, then we don't have school, but it just gives us a stopgap in case needed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
No.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. Item six, business items. Do we need to take anything out or motion?
You can take, you can do if you want, A, C, D, E, F, G, if you want to all the time.
I want to take out C too.
Yeah, or do, say, so you can do A, D through G if you like, or individually it's up to you.
I'd like to do D individually as well.
Okay. All right. Anyone want to motion A?
I'll motion A, E, F, and G. I'll second that.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
We did A, I want to make sure I address them all. We did A, E.
F and G.
Okay. Do you, I can highlight real quick just so everyone's up to speed. The band and choir trip, you guys previously approved them to go to New York. New York has, to go to pretty much 90% of what the trip had planned, you have to be vaccinated, so the numbers were lower than they needed to meet the original amount of what they told parents and families it would cost. So they were starting to cost themselves out of that trip or make it unaffordable for our kids. So they came up with a Plan B, which will still be an amazing experience. It will open up to more of our students and be more cost-effective. So that's the E and then the F is the robotics overnight trip for them to compete in March.
G is basically our annual resolutions to approve the rates, tax rates as termed by county auditor. Basically, one of our bond issues did roll off.
Yay.
So we have one more, one other one besides the big one, the basic rolls off next year. That's about a half a mil. And the 78 million dollar bond issue, which RealG estimated was 6.7, is now down to 4.5 mil. So it went down too.
Wow.
Okay.
So both of those went down, so the mil rate's actually decreasing, but the problem is people, people's values are going up, so they're not necessarily seeing the change in taxes, but what we are getting, our percentage, is actually decreasing, so.
Which one fell off?
It was the basic, no, it's not, and the way it refinanced, it was the original, basically, 2009, 99 bond issue, which was where we bid all additions and stuff. Aetna was 97, but the way they refinanced it, it just, it worked that way. So basically, 99 bond issue went off and Aetna goes off next year. And then again, it's a half mil. Final payment December of next, this year, so.
Great.
Wow.
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
All right, I missed who seconded. Who missed?
Candy.
Candy? Okay, thanks. I.
I have no idea.
I was like, I have no second here. Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. Those pass. 6A, oh, 6B. Anyone want a motion for?
I think this is me.
I think it's just discussion.
This is a discussion, yeah.
It's not motion. Ricky, can you help me out with this? So at the end of Aetna's former trustees' terms, they granted a lot of TIFs, which is going to really impact the school district. We checked and it looks like they delivered to the school district on time. But when we checked with CTEC, CTEC said that they don't have date stamps, but they scan the information in as they get them. And the dates that they were scanned in are not in accordance with the law. So we were, I was thinking that we contact CTEC and see if they're willing. Are they willing?
I did contact, I've not heard back from her.
Okay.
I have contacted her twice, actually.
Just to pursue the fact that, you know, we're leaving a bunch of money on the table and if they didn't do it in accordance with the law, then we wouldn't have to.
They're invalid, their actions are invalid if they didn't.
Exactly. And we could help them in that.
Could we as a board send a letter to them requesting?
I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think I know anybody on CTEC, so I don't have any connection with them. I just know kids that go there. I don't know.
I mean, I know the treasurer, he's the one that responded, you know.
Okay.
Ben Strebe, so I reach out to him. I just, part of the worry is word he was, he usually does. So it'd be nice if they actually had video.
Right.
Something proving that they actually did deliver December 1st.
I mean, technically, we, our video was on, what, the 15th?
Yeah.
But it was at 1:30. So they didn't give us the full 14 days notice.
Because the meeting was at nine, correct?
The meeting was at nine.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, because his confirmation was, I suppose, different to both places at 2 o'clock. When he actually delivered ours until it was almost 3 o'clock. It was 2:50.
Could we check if it's a full 20, like a full 14 days? Or is it 14 days being 9 o'clock that morning?
Yeah, I emailed him, all I can confirm with our attorney, I don't know if it's that.
Right.
I don't know if the laws is that specific.
It could just be a close of business type of thing.
But it would be nice to know if the law was.
Yeah, we'll find out.
It can't hurt to ask.
By the, per, actually minute, you know, 14 days.
Well, and from what I've heard, that there's been some concern on the wardings and everything, so it, it appears that they were rushing to get everything complete. So it wouldn't really surprise me if there was like an, something missed.
Well, and it's my understanding, wasn't a few of them that they approved had to be re-approved?
Yes.
So when's the timeline for that? When would we need?
That was the 15th.
That was, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
So many of them.
Yeah.
All right.
So we can reach out to them, reach out to CTEC?
I think it's definitely.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the treasurer again and then see if he gets.
I think it's worth it.
Well, his is really easy because if it's December 1st, I mean, it's two or three days past the 15 days, so.
Right, he, he said he was scanning December 1st and the 16th, right? There was a lot of.
December 1st was like a Wednesday, so clearly they, like.
Because their meetings were on Tuesday.
You can't say like, oh, it came in on a Friday and we didn't scan it until Monday.
Right.
There was.
It's, yeah, it's middle of the week.
If he usually does them right away, it's possible, you know.
That's how he worded it, because I usually do it as soon as I get.
But if we could get clarification and if we could get legal clarification too, because if truly 9 o'clock and 1:30 matter, then I think we need to know that. Because, you know, I mean, this is money that could be going to our students that are not, that is not.
Yes.
So.
I will follow up.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on that one?
And then you can report that to us at our next meeting next month?
Yep, I can do that. I'll probably send an email to you all as before that, but we can talk about it in public session again, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. 6D, I think this one requires a motion.
6C.
C, C first.
Oh, C, my bad. 6C.
It does require, yeah.
And I was the one that asked that this be put on just because with the work that we're doing with the budget advisory group and all that has been going on with Aetna as per our last conversation even, I thought it would be helpful if we gave Mrs. Moore the ability to speak on our behalf at least for the next month or two, just so we can get, or it could be longer, I don't really. Just so information can get out there.
Right.
Accurate information. So that was, that was my logic. I asked Mrs. Moore if she would be agreeable to that and she did agree, so we thought the board could discuss it.
Right, one of the first things I want to approach with the new Aetna Township trustees is the statements that were made by a former trustee on 7/13/2020, where he stated that the school district cost the township $161,000 because we did not agree to reduce payments to the 310 widening project, which is completely erroneous, not true. The refinancing happened, the reductions went into place. What we refused was we refused to change our payment. That's where he's saying that we cost them 161,000. We really didn't cost them anything and in fact, we're saving them money because we're paying the loan off quicker. Sort of like when you refinance your house, you get a lower payment, we keep the same payment and you pay it off quicker. So I want to make sure that the trustees are aware of that and I also wanted to give them a background story of why we made that decision, that we have, you know, numerous conversations with the former trustee who promised us to be the last one in, first one out. We have transcript from the former administrator, trustee administrator that in public session stated we would be the last one in, the first one out and that we would be reimbursed. And I wanted to present them with all of this information. I wanted to present them with the fact that their own fiscal officer, Aetna Township's own fiscal officer, agreed with maintaining the same payments. And that was one of the, because I've, I've heard through the grapevine that one of the trustees still is holding a grudge and still has this belief that we cost them $161,000. And I just wanted to clear the air with that and give them all of the supporting documents so they can see for themselves. And if, I was going to say, if you guys want me to do that, if you don't and if you just want to let sleeping dogs lie and let everything, that's fine too.
I'm going to make the motion to authorize Mrs. Moore to speak on the behalf of the Board of Education for Aetna Township, please.
And it also sets precedent too, a little bit. And if we need to set up authorization for other entities, we can, but presently, we don't need that. But it allows us, it would allow us to do that in the future with other folks as well, so.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani. Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Motion passes. We are now on six D, the Watkins Memorial High School Course Description Act.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I just looked it over, and again, my hiccup is the hiccup that I've had for years. And that's the ELA fee. I know we did the audit, and I appreciate the audit, and I understand that the money is count, I still just think that's too much to ask families for. So. I didn't, I know we had talked if the district could pick up a piece, or if we could just, even though we can, you know, say what the thirty dollars is going for, if we could. Could lower it, it's still just, it doesn't sit right with me, and that, I'm just gonna throw that out there, I'm not, it just is as it is. That's my only concern.
Any other questions or concerns, discussions?
I just, mine was just a comment. I'm extremely pleased with the extensive additional curriculum I've seen with this. Just. I'm sad that my children are graduating this year, but I'm extremely pleased with, with the, just nice, nice work.
Yeah, it's Melissa and her team, for sure.
By half of, you know, for the whole team, just excellent job on.
I, I agree too.
Yeah, all the way around, all departments.
The ag thing was very cool.
Excellent work, so.
I agree. I was very upset when I got the email about scheduling. I gotta be honest, my mommy was like, why am I getting this email? They're still in third grade.
Yeah, it goes real fast, I'm gonna tell you. But yeah, nice, nice job, everybody, because it's just, just some really nice opportunities, so.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments, discussions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. And that passes. I think we're done with six. Seven treasures items.
Motion seven A.
Second.
These are the donations, which we always accept with a great big thank you. Any other discussion?
I see, you know, a lot of that is scoreboard. Are we nearing the end of that, or halfway through?
Way more. I think last time I saw, it was like ninety-six thousand dollars left. It was north of two hundred thousand, so more than halfway.
Everybody's holding up their commitments. That's awesome.
All right. Anybody else?
Now, Exeter is the, the corporate park, right? Is that correct? Is that a?
Yes, that was part, yeah, that was the, that was part of the, basically. Uh, no, yes, yes, uh, let's see, Exeter. Parcel five. I can't remember which one, because there's, it was Core five.
Yeah, that was six.
Core five, Columbia, and then, I can't remember which one was Exeter, but this is part of the donation agreement. We agreed to, in exchange for the abatement, is they would donate twenty thousand dollars to the school, and we actually bought computers with the money already.
That's what I was trying to see. That was, that was in a payment in lieu of.
Yes.
Items, things. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Passes. Number eight, superintendent's items.
So the only thing I have for you guys this evening is your bullying, restraint, seclusion report. You should all have a copy of it somewhere, hopefully, in the view. I did want to point out a couple of things on there, and then if you have any questions, myself or Dan will be happy to answer them. So at the bottom, we're looking for this current school year. I did want to point out to you the Kirkersville numbers, which are obviously higher than the other two elementaries. We had some situations in the beginning of the year for kids not in school for the last two years, learning how to manage behaviors. So those numbers are going to be significantly lower, if present at all, second semester, things are vastly different than they were the first month of school. The one seclusion report that is on there was, was due to a student trying to run out into the road, so that was a safety issue. And then, just also, as a note, as our enrollment continues to grow, we as a district actually have a lower percentage. Being reported to the state in comparison to the past, although numbers may appear higher, just compared to the amount of students we actually have. So, those two things, and then if you have any questions, I'm happy to share and/or Dan. And if you don't, that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions? Number nine, request to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters Legal four thirteen, or Southwest Licking Education Association. Seeing none. Item ten, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.